We have one minute.
Oh, yeah, the clock is, I think that clock is a little fast.
Right there.
I mean, all the people that are at home right now just waiting.
[laughing]
They're like, when is the mayor?
Can't stand the excitement.
What is going? The late local news is over. Wheel of Fortune is over.
There goes Chase and Champ.
Yeah, yeah.
The Tuesday, July 13th, 2021 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the Constitution under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Just a brief announcement about open podium invitation. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to city government before each council meeting. Council meetings typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month. However, in the summer, we just have one a month. Council pre-open, pre-me open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and your subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. If time does permit, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getchel, we have several proclamations, presentations, donations this evening.
We do, Mayor. Thank you very much. First of all, it's been an annual visit this time of the summer from our friends at Tor de Tanka who come in to give us some detail and promote their events. So I believe we have Molly Baumann from Tor de Tanka here.
Welcome.
Hi. I brought my swag. This year it's chiplets, but keep them fresh.
All right.
One year I brought two loads. I really love that one.
These have no specific value, correct?
Thank you.
You had cowbells once, too. Remember the cowbells?
There was cowbells. Yes, everybody needs more cowbells. And also bike corners. We used to get some bits of swag every year. And I've been out for ever.
Yeah, I remember the bike corner. The cushion was too.
So I'm Molly Baumann, and I am the ECFE and preschool coordinator, but have been doing Tor de Tanka for the last five years. I originally was the adult programs manager and worked with Ron's wife Kathy.
Yes.
She was my first A P R instructor, which was awesome. And then I was in charge of our before and after school care program. And so I've been around and seen Tor and Tanka many years. And Eden Prairie has been one of our greatest supporters. A special shout out to Tom Lowry with the police department. It's, as you all know, COVID has been hard for everything this year, and putting on a big event like this is really especially challenging when we're coming out of such hard budget times for everyone. So we just appreciate everyone taking the time to help us volunteer with the event. And I know that they sent a PowerPoint over. Do they have that for you guys to do?
There it is.
Yes.
Yes.
Good, I didn't have to get my thing out. So this is our logo for this year. So if you go to the next slide, the question for you all is, is this a thing? Do I have a clicker? Well, maybe I have a clicker.
You do.
There we go. Okay. The little Tor de Tanka trivia. Our TDT bike dude is in its blank adaptation.
Fourth.
Yes. Mayor for the win. That's accurate.
Yes.
I think I like him the best this year because he's wearing his helmet. So safety first, that's what makes me like him the most this year. These are all of our major sponsors. As you can see, we get a lot of support from the businesses in our communities, and we really appreciate it and could not pull this off without them. Domino's is one of my favorites because there's always free pizza at the finish line. Just what you need after your ride 100 miles is a big piece of pizza. So some history for us. As you can see, even with last year, we had a virtual event, and we still had almost 300 people participate with us, which was awesome. It just goes to show how important this event is to people. Our highest numbers were in 2016, and we've been hovering right around that, 32 to 3,500 riders. It's quite a scene watching all of these people leave the high school and our Minnetoka Community Education Center and seeing all of their faces when they finish their ride. We have, we've had a virtual ride, which was, you know, basically people clocking their distances and telling us how they did. Otherwise, we have between a 16 and 28 ride, which is one of our most popular rides, and that's also one of the rides that has a lot of families that get involved and ride along. Inevitably, we have kids that are beating mom and dad every year and rubbing it in their faces, of course, but it's probably my favorite part of it to watch them cross the finish line, and they're so excited while they wait for mom or dad to catch up. Our 100 mile ride is also one of my favorites. It is a century ride, and two years ago, we had two 10-year-olds who did the 100 mile ride. They're neighbors who ride their bikes together, and then one of their dads rode with them. And so, once we got word of it, we started following them around from rest stop to rest stop so we could take their pictures, and they did really great. The second largest ride is usually our 42 to 57 mile ride, and that's a ride that people typically train for. I think sometimes with the 16, people just come out, they're like, yeah, I ride a bike. I could do this. So watching people accomplish these goals is pretty incredible. For this year, we're going to have a 16, a 30, a 36, a 42, a 62, a 71, and a 100 mile ride. And I do want to just stress that it is a ride, not a race, which is what makes it so much fun. Our first day TDT registrations, we had 101 this year. It was awesome. It's like people are just waiting to get back out there and do something together and do something fun. The vibe this year is going to be incredible. I'm so excited for it and excited to be a part of it. So you can see that we've had almost every county in the state of Minnesota with a participant. If you know any of the counties in the white people who live there, please encourage them to register for the ride. We'd like to get a bingo on this map. We also have almost every state in the U.S. So if you know anyone in Idaho, Wyoming, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Tennessee, or Alabama, it looks like maybe Delaware and maybe Vermont are our missing pieces. So if you have relatives that want to come visit you and also take a really great ride, 60 miles is not hard to do. We travel through Chanhassen, Deep Haven, Eden Prairie, Greenwood, Lester Prairie, Minnetoka, Navarro, Orano, Spring Lake, or Sprint Park, Waconia, Wayzata, Watertown, Tonka Bay, Shorewood, New Germany, Mound, Lake, Long Lake, Independence, Excelsior, Delano, and Chaska. I didn't know that there was even a Lester Prairie until very recently, and there are a lot of these cities I had never been to until I started doing this event, and it's so cool to get out and see people out in their communities cheering people on as they're riding through their town. This year, our rider shirts are a blue with a cool insert panel. And then we also have a jersey that we sell each year, and this year, this is the design, and it's kind of fun. Seems brighter and different than what it's been in the past. Each year, they're all so different. My shirt collection is pretty awesome. Like I said before, it is getting kind of challenging for us to do this event without volunteer help, and so we are looking for volunteers. If anyone watching who's done with the Wheel of Fortune and onto the city council meeting, we have tons of volunteer opportunities that don't require a lot of physical activity. So if someone is like, well, I don't know if I can stand around and do that all day, we have opportunities for everyone, and we would appreciate the help. So these are all of our routes, and you can see we go all over this part of the state, and it's pretty cool. This year, we have a remembrance. Jerry Green passed away. He was biking for over 20 years, and in his obituary, he mentioned Tor de Tanka. So he'd been riding with us through 84. So the event is Saturday, August 7th, always the first Saturday in August, and we hope to see you there in some capacity, even if it's just cheering someone on. And really, thank you so much to the city of Eden Prairie and to the EPPD. You have been a longtime champion of this event, and we really appreciate it. Your getting on board at the beginning always helps us to encourage other cities to join. So thank you very much, and thank you all for your time tonight.
Thanks, Molly. The wonders of technology. Kathy just texted, that's Molly. She used to be my supervisor, so.
Hi, Kathy.
A little bit of a call, a little bit of a call out there. So Kathy's not watching Jeopardy. She's watching us.
That's nice.
All right. Let's see. I think I'll go to Mr. Lotthammer directly. Is that okay, Mr. Getchel, if we skip over Mr. Lotthammer? Welcome.
Your honor, council members, I'm here tonight, and it's my privilege to be here to help present a couple of recent awards that we have been awarded. Our professional association, the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association, each year looks at what are some model and award-winning projects and programs, and we've been fortunate to be selected over the years several times. And tonight, we've actually been selected twice for two different categories. And so they'll be brought to you by Lori Brink and Valerie Verley for the details of that. But before that, one of our residents, Amy Peterson, who you've met before, she has always been willing to come out on behalf of our state association as a representative from them and let the council know about what it takes to win these awards and a little bit about what our state association is. So I'll introduce to you Amy Peterson.
Welcome, Amy.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. It is an honor to be here tonight. Again, as Mr. Lotthammer mentioned, my name is Amy Peterson. I'm a resident here of Eden Prairie for, gosh, it's been almost 17 years. And then I, my day job, I am as the superintendent of recreation for the city of Maple Grove, but I am here tonight on behalf of our state association, the Minnesota Rec and Park Association, with our Awards of Excellence program. So again, I have been here numerous years, but I just have to say this is an award for the year of 2020, and what a year that was. The city of Eden Prairie in general, but obviously I have a huge passion for parks and recs, so the parks and recs in particular worked really hard to continue maintaining services for our residents. And the two programs that you're here about tonight are both examples of that hard work over this past year. So again, thank you for your leadership and for allowing our staff or the parks and recs team to continue to provide those services, whether they're virtually creative thinking just really, really helped our residents get through this pandemic. So thank you. So as one thing I do every time I come, is just kind of give a little history of the Minnesota Park and Recreation Association. So it was formed in 1937 to foster the growth of our, of the development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. And presently, we have over 850 professional, corporate, board-commissioned, student, and retiring members. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association has their office located in Fridley. And the MRPA Awards Committee, which I am a member of, was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the fields of parks, recreation, and leisure services. Awards Committee's members represent a cross-section of association members from the state of Minnesota. The award committee feels it's important to increase awareness of the appreciation for the excellent parks, trails, facilities, recreation programs, and services that are occurring in Minnesota, and that is why the Awards of Excellence program was created. The Awards of Excellence program is also presented by the Minnesota Recreation Park Association and proudly sponsored by our partner, Highway Federal Credit Union. The Awards of Excellence is an annual program of the Minnesota Recreation Park Association that was solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for exemplary projects that either were implemented in 2020 or received substantial revisions in 2020. We do have a variety of different categories, and the award that on behalf of MRPA, the Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present the Award of Excellence for our virtual membership in the category of administrative and management strategies. So Valerie Verley, if you want to come on up, I would like to present this award on behalf of the state or the Minnesota Recreation Park Association. There you go.
Speech, speech.
So in, as my speech, I'll just tell a little more about the project just quickly to give you a general idea, but, Your Honor and council members, it's my honor to present this award for the community center's virtual membership. It goes without saying, 2020 was quite the year with a lot of challenges, so this makes this award even sweeter that we were able to kind of come up with something to continue to serve our members and our community through a tough time, and that it was born out of a pandemic. It became really clear to us during the pandemic that while money and value always matter, the driving behavior for whether or not someone purchased a membership with us became entirely based on comfort level. So the question kind of became, how do we keep serving the community and meet them where they're at? So then the planning phases began for a virtual membership concept in September of last fall, and the goal was to hit a November 1st timeline because we had hundreds of members coming off suspension, and we wanted to offer them an opportunity. We were able to deliver on that deadline, and unbeknownst to us, the timing couldn't have been better. The second shutdown came within about two weeks of us launching the virtual membership. So it was nice to be able to prove to our community and to our members that we had learned from the first shutdown and tried to be proactive and progressive and think ahead as to how we could keep serving them, knowing the odds were stacked against us and knowing that they no longer had a facility to go to, so we could keep the community intact, keep our members in communication with us. So now we have the ability to connect with members anywhere they have internet access. We have some that are in different states. One of the instructor sisters lives in Alaska. She's one of our members, so pretty cool that the reach has gone even farther, and we definitely see the virtual membership option staying to continue to just have other options so people can find us anywhere outside of our four walls even. So we do still have the live streaming classes and a catalog of on-demand classes, and this is a project we're incredibly proud of and honored today to be recognized for the MRPA Award of Excellence today. And now I'm going to turn it over to Lori Brink to present our other award that we have tonight.
Yeah, and I will just present the next award from MRPA's to, for the program category for their Boo Drive Through. So I'll ask Lori Brink to come on up.
Thank you.
Another speech.
Thank you, Amy. Your honor, council members, I want to thank the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association for this award, and really, I get to stand up here, but this is on behalf of a very creative staff and some very generous business partners and community partners. As you know, our department typically holds a large-scale indoor Halloween event at the mall, at the Eden Prairie Center Mall, and with the pandemic restrictions, that was not possible this year. And so our team set about coming up with some creative ways of helping our community celebrate and came up with the Boo Drive Through experience, and what an experience that was. I will, I will say that this award actually is in recognition of community partnerships. And once word got out that we were going to somehow figure out a way to celebrate Halloween for kids in Eden Prairie, businesses and organizations came forth and said, how can I get involved? How can I donate financially? Can I donate product? Can I set up a trick-or-treating booth? We had, we had so much really positive response, and so we heard from private businesses, we had a church, we had two senior housing facilities, we had nonprofit organizations, we had community partners like the library and the school district all came together in a big way for Eden Prairie's kids. And so it's, it's an event we were really proud of and I think showed a lot of Eden Prairie's community spirit. And a special thanks to our police and fire department, not only in helping us to plan a very safe day for our families and residents that day, but they were there beside us handing out treats and taking pictures and just building community, and so I want to thank them for that as well. And finally, again, I just want to remind you, I was nothing but just a person dressed as a scarecrow directing traffic that day. This award really belongs to our creative staff, but also a really generous community that, that came through for our kids that day. And so I want to thank MRPA again for this award.
I think we're going to do pictures.
Invite Mayor Case to come down. We'll take some photos and move on to donations.
Great.
Your honor, council members, we do have a donation. It was actually towards our Arbor Day event. It's from the International School. It's for $500, and we appreciate their help. As you know, we handed out quite a few seedlings to our community members to help with our reforestation efforts, and so their funds went to help provide those to our community. So we really appreciate that.
We will need a motion here just before someone makes it. I don't know if all of you have had the opportunity to get up to the International School, but do so if you haven't yet. I'm sure they would welcome you and actually give you a tour, but I've had an opportunity to do a couple ribbon cuttings up there. They have an amazing site that they've been situated, I guess is the word, into this hillside with incredible woods and trees. It's so fitting that they would contribute something in terms of Arbor Day and trees. I'm just so impressed with whoever actually built in that site and did it that way. Is there a motion to accept this donation?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from the International School of Minnesota to go towards the Arbor Day event.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Get, Mr. Lotthammer.
The second donation tonight is towards our senior center. It helped with the shred truck where people can bring their items that they want to have shredded right to the parking lot of the senior center, hand them over, and they're shredded right there in front of you. And also to some of our transportation efforts where we go and pick people up and do some of the shopping bus and transportation back to some of the programs that are at the senior center. Came from two different places, a total of $500, Presbyterian Homes, Flagstone Senior Living, $200 from them, and then also from Spark, $300 for a total of 500 towards the senior center.
Again, what a great partnership with some of our senior residents, places in the city. Is there a motion to?
I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from Presbyterian Homes, Flagstone Senior Living, $200 for the shred truck event at the senior center, and from Spark, $300 to go toward the senior center transportation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Lotthammer.
This donation is for Safety Camp from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund. Actually comes through Comcast to the Crime Prevention Fund, and we want to say a special thank you to Councilmember Toomey, who's a part of the Crime Prevention Fund that does facilitate this. This past year, Safety Camp was also unique in a couple ways. One, two years ago, those kids didn't have an opportunity to go through Safety Camp due to COVID, and so we did it twice this year. So the kids last year could be a part of it, and also the kids that were in the age group for this year were a part of it as well. And I'm always honored, along with Chief Gerber and Chief Sackett, to be a part of the graduation ceremonies, and it is amazing to see the impact that our police staff, our fire staff, and our parks and recreation workers have as camp counselors amongst those kids. And this past year, we actually didn't tell them that those people in t-shirts and shorts were police officers and fire personnel until the time of graduation, and the look on some of the kids' face to know that that's who they had spending the day with was priceless. So we really appreciate this ongoing support from Comcast, and again, it works through the Crime Prevention Fund with a lot of efforts from Councilmember Toomey. So on behalf of both police, fire, and parks and recreation, thank you for that.
And I just want to underscore Councilmember Toomey's partnership she's built with Comcast over the years, which is amazing, and then just your tremendous dedication to the people of Eden Prairie through your work with the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund. So thank you so much. Would you like to say something? It looks like you.
No, I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a motion to accept this donation?
Should I do it?
Ooh, sure.
I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $5,000 from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund that was donated from Comcast to go towards Safety Camp.
Is there a second? Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lotthammer. You know, people here, meeting after meeting, these donations come in, and some people may think, well, doesn't the city have all these tax dollars? Well, tax dollars never really go far enough, and these donations are tremendous advantages to us and help our dollars go further. So we, we deeply appreciate all the donations that come in throughout the year from all the different sources. So thank you this evening for these particular ones. Approval of the agenda, before we have a motion on the floor, any agenda items that anybody wishes to question, add to, edit? Nothing? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda then as-is?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes. Any questions of either of the minutes that you wish to call out, or can we put them both in a motion? Go ahead and put them both in a motion.
Move to approve the following city council minute council workshop held Tuesday, June 15, 2021. City council meeting held Tuesday, June 15, 2021.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion on either of the minutes? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. No reports of advisory boards and commissions consent calendar, quite a long one this evening, A to W. Anybody have any items they wish to question, poll, have more discussion, learn more about, or are we ready for a motion? Looks like we're ready for a motion. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move to, I'll move for approval of items A through W on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, public hearings, I believe we just have the one this evening. Mr. Getchel.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We do have one item this evening. We have a proposal to construct a 62,000, give or take, 24, 62,024 square foot speculative industrial building in the Golden Triangle area, specifically at Crosstown Circle and Flying Cloud Drive. The property is five acres, located, as I said, in the northwest corner of Flying Cloud Drive and Crosstown Circle. Currently consists of two parcels. One is a vacant restaurant, and the other is a surface parking lot. The applicant intends to raise the building, remove the parking lot prior to constructing the new building, and the new building is a mix of manufacturing, office, and warehouse uses. The applicant is here tonight to present to you their proposal. Then we would have a public hearing, and we ask that you take action on their planned unit development concept and the first reading of an ordinance with waivers for this particular project in the Golden Triangle.
Go ahead and say your name and address.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Eric Miller. I'm a civil engineer with Samba Tech. We office out of 12800 Whitewater Drive, Minnetoka, Minnesota, and with me is Ben Kursnak with Hempel. Ben, if you could state your address.
Thank you. We're just up the road, 150 Crosstown Circle, Suite 600. Thank you.
We do have a brief presentation, if we can have that pulled up. So again, Your Honor, council members, thank you for allowing us to present Crosstown Core to you this evening. Crosstown Core, sorry, the project team currently is developer Hempel Real Estate. Ben Kursnak is the primary point of contact, myself for Civil and Landscape, Samba Tech, Eric Miller, and then the architect is Harris Architects. They're out of Illinois, and that contact is Casey Cluckstall. Just contextually, the project's located in the Golden Triangle, great access and accessibility from 169, 62, 212. So we're really excited about really rejuvenating a property that, that is, can use some development opportunities. Here's a picture of the existing parking lot and building for the former Kubaki Restaurant. Here's a picture of the existing parking lot and building for the former Kubaki Restaurant. And then, as we know, the other facility is the current Tesla or former Tesla parking lot. Hempel Properties has closed and is the current ownership owner for both properties. So, that is currently already taking place. Site plan, again, a building is proposed at just over 62,000 square feet. 147 surface parking stalls, impervious area around 70% open area or pervious area at just under 30% at 27.5. And one of the items we are requesting is a parking lot setback along Flying Cloud Drive. That southern curb line currently aligns with the existing curb line for the parking lot. It is a corner lot and with the configuration of the site and really trying to create the, a good development opportunity to get the building to the size it is and ample parking, we're proposing a waiver of that parking lot setback adjacent to Flying Cloud Drive. Here's a bit of a blow up on that. Again, the front of the building facing Flying Cloud Drive, parking on the south, the west and the east side, and then a recessed truck dock on the north side of the building. Dedicated access off Flying Cloud Drive for employees, customers, and then segregating the truck traffic off that access up across Town Circle. Landscape plan, I think here's a note, it's just a very robust landscape plan. We are here also requesting a waiver from code due to the planting density for the site. We literally cannot plant as many trees as a code requires because we want the landscape to mature, be healthy and survive for the extent of the viability of the project. Therefore, we are proposing to request a waiver from that component. But again, several trees, several trees in excess of the code requirement, three inch, four inch trees are proposed. The four inch will probably likely to be spaded. So, a very robust landscape plan. Architecturally, the building elevations exceed city code. So, we got both vertical and horizontal access components along the front and both the east and the west sides. We've got distinct massing elements at three locations along the front. Assuming that the building can be demised down to likely three tenants. It could be a single tenant building, but it is speculative build in nature. So, giving us flexibility on breaking that building down to the market needs and future tenant, teneting opportunities. I realize articulation and color variation with the exposed aggregates. I think it's going to have a very prominent architectural appearance from Flying Cloud Drive and a great asset to the Golden Triangle and the community in general. A little more detail on the building elevations. Top is the front. And then we got the east elevation, the west elevation showing the material changes and vertical articulation. And then on the north elevation, we lose some of the material changes, but again have the color coloring and then also the vertical articulation. Sure, go ahead.
So, on the west side of the building, that side faces the public storage facility that's. The public storage facility that's currently there. And then in terms of the rear, there is quite a bit of elevation change at the rear of the building that goes into our landscaped area and that joins another industrial property. So, I think that works pretty well for truck court area.
Thanks, Ben. And we stand for any questions that the, your honor, the council may have. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple. Can you explain in terms of sustainability aspect of the building? When I read it, I'm not sure I understood all of that.
Certainly. So, I think some of the low hanging fruit on the sustainability component are some of the natural vegetations that we're currently proposing to do on the site. Natural grasses on the east, east and the north end of the building. Those would be like a Lomo fescue. Maintenance very limited, probably maintained at a minimum two times a year, as much as a four times a year, but not a sodded component. Additionally, we are providing a electrical vehicle charging station located on the front entry of the building.
How many?
Currently, one is proposed at the, I believe it's at the western entrance. And then more details will need to be done, but with the HVAC system that will be designed, built on a facility like this, those facilities are quite efficient these days. It'll be incorporated as we go through the design build process. We haven't got into the details of that, but certainly will be.
So, how many employees you expect to occupy that buildings total?
It's speculative build. So, based on a speculative build, there are no tenants selected for the building right now. But the building is programmed to be in the order of 10 to 20% office and the rest of it in either manufacturing or warehousing or other spaces. Ben, any other comments on?
Just a follow up question on that. So, is it one charging station is sufficient in terms of ratio? Is that, is that, how you come up with the one versus five? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's really, again, it'd be teneting driven. So, if there's tenants that certainly require or request additional electrical vehicle stations, that can be part of the tenant improvements. That would be coordinated with the developer. So, certainly, we anticipate with the way that area is going, that more tenants may be requesting those type of facilities at their, at their place of work. But until we have, you know, a determination on is the building going to have one tenant, two tenants, or as possibly as many, three tenants, it's a bit speculative to determine how, what the need for those vehicle charging stations would be today.
That's electricity's in the ground and the wiring is out to that one station. Is that cable or wire capable of becoming two or three or four? Or is that you gotta dig everything back up to? I mean, is that a possibility? And I don't understand, I guess, enough about the draw of electricity from those.
It certainly is. So, we currently office out of 1280 Whitewater Drive, right on the corner of Highway 62 and 494. And our building is currently being outfitted or retrofitted with electrical vehicle charging stations, I believe, four. It's, you know, pure office building. I think total space is around probably, probably close to 200,000 square feet. So, no open space and they're outfitting with four. So, as we move forward, we know we have the capabilities to expand on those components and retrofit as the market and the tenants needs move in that direction. And we certain, they're going to move in that direction. I think that's very clear and evident. Timing and where they need to go, that's a piece that I think we don't know at this time and don't want to speculate that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, I assume this is a flat roof building?
It is.
And more and more, we're encouraging current flat roof buildings to consider solar panels. Are you making this solar panel ready? It's easy to put in the electrics when you're building it. It's very, fairly expensive to do it after it's already built. Are you putting in the electrics that would need for potential future solar panels or are you putting in solar panels?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. We get asked quite frequently. So, most buildings of this nature have the capabilities to support the additional loads for solar panels. So, there's not a lot of additional structural work that would need to be done. It's a fairly light load. The, this question comes up quite frequently and as an engineer, I'm not a solar panel expert. What we do get engaged with our clients, exploring the opportunity to put solar on roofs for industrial facilities. And the challenge is really, it comes down to the timing between the agreement between the provider and the developer. The agreements that we find tend currently to be very onerous on the ability to make building modifications, particularly roof modifications for the location of things like roof mounted units, RTUs, until the tenants are set. So, again, when you're doing speculative build, it's problematic to get three steps, four steps down the road in those agreements, that planning for solar powder roofs until you get a defined plan on how we need demised building, where rooftop units are going to go and what those needs, those power needs are going to be and whether or not they're going to be going back to the provider, serving the building, doing those things. So, it certainly can be outfitted for that, but too premature to make a commitment on how and when that can be done at this time.
I just know from having them put on my own garage, which is much less than a big building, that it's not necessarily the roof strength, though it could be. But you have to have a certain amount of strength just to hold up from snow and such. But the big part is getting the electricity up there that they can hook into rather than having to rewire down with extra boxes and all that kind of stuff. But when you're building itself, it's pretty easy to do. I don't even know that it would be all that expensive for extra box, you know, and having the stuff go up and capped off so they could easily access it. Are you doing that?
Yeah, the beauty about a speculative built warehouse is the internal is unfinished until the tenant arrives. So, whether you want to drop on a column at that location or that location or this location, there's a lot of flexibility in this type of product, on those internal components, where they go, how they go, once we know what the internal layout's going to be with the tenants. So, excellent question and we do have a lot of flexibility if that opportunity should arise.
I also have a question for staff. Do you want to know?
How about just, let's finish up questions for proponent and then we'll come right back to you. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I'm looking at the rendering, nice looking building. I anticipate that we're talking air conditioning, heating units are all going to be on the roof, in a flat roof.
They are.
I'm also not seeing any skirting of any type. And I understand that it probably could be one of two things. That roof might be lower than what I'm seeing right now already. I want to know, is it going to be very visible from the road? Some buildings get pretty ugly real quick that way. And skirting comes in, you know, very well. Give me, tell me what, how you're going to be doing this?
Sure. It's an excellent question. We did provide a diagram to city staff that reflects the parapet heights and the screening from the adjoining property lines. That can be accomplished as we move away or internal to the building. And as you think about it with the parapet heights and that sightline, there's certain height that RT units can be as they move internal to the building. So, your lowest established height for the maximum height for an RT unit that's near the perimeter wall is going to be much lower than the units that will be more internal. City staff can certainly share that document that we provided based on that sightline study. But that document demonstrates that we'll be able to fully screen all of those units from the adjoining property line on the roadside conditions. With the grade change on the north side of the property, it's a significant grade change. There is certainly a sightline that cannot be screened on that without the existing, the proposed vegetation.
Where this building's going to be sitting, I think what we're talking about right now is important and it's important to you also, I think. I can tell from what you're telling me. Because if it's too visible, it's going to attract from a really slick design. And, you know, that's kind of, you know, where I'm cautioning. But I understand what you're saying when you're talking about the sightlines because that's truly what I'm, you know, what I'm looking at. And I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I went out and drove yesterday over to the property and saw it. And I was just, had a question on the trees. When you are first turn onto, from Flying Cloud Drive onto Crosstown, that corner, you have a bunch of trees slated to go. Those actually look like pretty healthy, good trees.
Yeah, they are very, fairly mature trees. With the way that we're proposing to develop the property is, the site currently sits a bit recessed, the parking lot from Crosstown Drive and Flying Cloud. Flying Cloud is currently ironically not an urban section roadway. It has ditches. And there's some drainage patterns through there that we need to maintain. With the development of the property, we are going to be creating a truck dock, a recessed area that's pretty close to current grades. But we're also going to be raising the building elevation so they have a more prominent approach from Flying Cloud Drive and Crosstown Circle. Again, marketability, having the ability, building at a certain elevation that has that prominence appearance really shows off that architecture is important for Hempel Properties and marketability of the property. To do that, it does require us to grade and encroach in some of those existing trees and require them to be removed. We did work with the city forester to identify some very strategic trees that could be saved along Flying Cloud Drive, but there are several that need to be, need to be removed. The only other item I would say is it's going to be a robust landscape plan, replacing those trees. And we also want that visibility to the building. So, you know, I think from a marketability standpoint, the current corner with the whole finished project, the enhanced architecture, the robust landscaping, it's going to be a really project that the city can be proud of.
Well, the little grove of trees is actually kind of charming. You know, there's about five or 10 trees.
Yeah. If they, if, as we were working with the city forester, if we could save them and achieve the other objective of the project, we could, we would, but they're not in a position that they can be salvaged.
Okay.
I have questions for staff.
You can sit down and we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
They talked about a tree waiver on this. Are we getting dollars in lieu of for trees like we do on most development projects to put the trees elsewhere in city parks or is this just a complete waiver?
Mayor, members of the council, from a landscaping perspective, they are asking for a waiver because of the height of the building and the additional landscaping that is required as a part of that. From a tree replacement standpoint, they're meeting their tree replacement through actual trees planted on site and a partial payment to make up the difference.
Good, excellent. And is all the material in compliance with our codes for what they have to have on this?
Mayor, members of the council, yes. The building materials and the architecture all meet and exceed city standards.
Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and open up a public hearing and then if there's additional questions, we can close the public hearing and continue our conversations. Is that fine, counsel? So, this is a public hearing. I don't see anyone else here, but if there's anyone here in the audience or somewhere back in the lobby that would like to address the counsel on this particular issue, please come forward. Seeing none, counsel? Well, let me ask your pleasure here. Do people have more questions? Otherwise, we could go ahead and move the motion second and still have conversation. Do you want to do it that way or do you have questions that need to be asked prior to us making the motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then on the entire four bullets.
Mayor, real quick.
Sorry, Mr. Getchel first.
No, thank you, no. Our city planner had a good catch here. So, typically a five bullets. And the fifth bullet, you recall, which we missed here, says, "Direct staff to prepare a development agreement subject to commission recommendations and council conditions." So, please add that at the end.
Okay, if you didn't get all of that, you can say, "As stated by city manager, Mr. Getchel." Is there someone then who would make a motion on the five bullets?
I'm more than. I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concert review on 5.0 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for the planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning change from OFC Rural and C-H-
unit development district review with waivers and zoning change from OFC rural and C-HWY to industrial I2 on 5.0 acres and adapt resolution for preliminary plat for two parcel into one lot on 5.0 acres and what the city manager said a few minutes ago.
"Direct staff to prepare a development agreement subject to..." Yes, as he stated.
As he stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, counsel, more questions, conversation, any discussion?
Just a question regard to council member Nelson's regard to adding some verbiage. I agree with her. If you want to go ahead, Ms. Nelson, to add that or not?
No, because the trees were there, and they already said that's part of the agreement as they'll have in lieu of, the stuff in lieu of payments. So if it's there, it doesn't need to be added, I don't think.
Were you referring to the charging stations with electrifying in advance?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we can leave that to staff.
Staff, okay.
Do you think discretion and, I mean, you know, I'll just state this, and I think staff has heard this. I think it's the desire of many of us up on this council, maybe all of us, and many, many people across our nation, that we would truly begin to build buildings, houses, residential, commercial, that are, if not solar-ready, actually have solar panels. I mean, our country in the next 20 years has to do a major transition. And if we continue to build the same, I'm not saying you are, but if we were to continue to build the same buildings from the 1950s, we're just out of step. But I don't believe we are, we as Eden Prairie, nor municipalities across the nation are quite there yet where we're ready to mandate certain standards. But we do want to hear very definitely that roofs can support solar panels. You said that. We'd like to hear that advanced thought is being given to making sure that the electricity is available as places, businesses in the next three, five, 10 years make the transition. Just read an article the other day that said, "We have to get rid of all natural gas in the United States of America. We have to go purely electric because we have to then depend on alternative fuels if we're going to be surviving 2050." I mean, look at our global warming today, and who knows what's going to happen anyway. But, so I think we all in this council want to see evidence that there's conversation going on, discussion, thought process going into, how do we begin to make these little transitions? I don't think we're ready, I've never, I just don't think we're ready to do the mandates yet. So.
No.
I feel like those conversations, you gave us a little indication, or a lot, that they're taking place. And I guess what I'm saying right now is not to all of you, welcome in a few moments if we pass this, but I am speaking to staff, just, and I know that you hear this a lot, and thank you for continuing to carry that message forward. So.
I would like to say I'm ready that we get, you know, something in writing and passed by the council that from this point on, businesses have to have it.
Have, actually, all solar?
Well, no, but they...
You definitely want to have that conversation. I'm not saying I'm not there in my heart.
No, but they minimally have to have solar-ready, in all ways.
How about this? Let's have this conversation, let's definitely have a workshop in the future.
It's not part of this.
Learn more and have a learning, I mean, I, my heart is right with you. I don't know enough yet to say that that's what we should do. I don't know that. But I do know I want to talk about it. So, yeah, let's maybe get a workshop down the way, find out what building codes are like across the nation, what other communities are doing, what the technology project up to 2030. Sorry, we're digressing on you here. But, you know, find out what's going to happen in 2030, 40, and start to project, and then maybe scaffold out, how do we get there? So, okay.
I'm not completely thrilled with a build-on-spec, so we're not doing it concept, but it looks like a nice building. It unfortunately may be obsolete in 15 years because you're not doing some of the stuff now, but if it has...
You can always retrofit.
If you have it so that it's easy to put in, I would urge you to think about that just for your investment's sake. And, you know, I can't see any reason at this point where we can logically say we need more. But, you know, if I can send a message to a lot of developers is it's time to start thinking about it, or you're not going to keep, you know, what you want in your building over time because other people will be doing it. So that would be my message.
And luckily, it sounds like it's a shell that can be adapted fairly easily. The other thing is that, as I've gone out, and I'll, last time I'll digress here, as I've gone out and visited with businesses that are currently in these buildings with flat roofs across Eden Prairie, we, as government, so here's another conversation topic for our future discussion, we need to incentivize these businesses today to begin to consider retrofitting into solar. So that's a whole nother conversation. Okay. Are we ready to vote on this tonight?
No.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, welcome. Thank you for sitting through our, you know, conversation, and thank you for seeding our thoughts on that. We appreciate that. Welcome to Eden Prairie. All right, Mr. Getchell, I believe that is all on our agenda this evening.
Payment of claims.
No payment.
Payment of claims.
Payment of claims.
Did. I believe I'm wrong. All right, payment of claims. Counselors, are there any items you wish to question?
That's all right.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
I'll make a motion for the approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Freyberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, now, are we ready?
Yep.
You sure? Councilmember Toomey, anything else I'm missing?
I think we're fine.
All right, thank you so much. Then is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting today.
Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, this meeting is adjourned.